So we'll have Mike and just to reiterate the purpose of our meeting today, again, it's just for us to discuss any concerns that our board members are hearing or seeing in our community about our SRO program or any law enforcement partnerships that we have, and what information we might need from Mike to gather for us to make an informed decision surrounding our values for our district. And that's really what we're meeting about is just giving Mike some guidance about what we would like to see and ensuring as well that we are hearing from our community and those in our community who oftentimes we haven't created the space for them to have a voice. So that is one way that we want to ensure that we make decisions considering our community and not just us in a position of leadership. So I think Mike has joined us on the phone.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, this is so much better. Great. So I was just resetting the meeting mic. So go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I did hear what Erica said to kick us off, and I just wanted to add my two cents as well as we get started. So this, the, you know, the conversation around school resource officers has been a pretty hot topic over the last couple of weeks. And I think in the metro area, it was kicked off by Portland Public and David Douglas deciding to sever their relationship with their, you know, to have the school resource officers in their building. And as that happened, it became clear that, you know, as we look at the districts across the region, that different districts are in different spots with their relationships with their law. And my goal, as we go through this process and we consider what our next steps are, my goal was to put together a process that would be informed by the conversation that takes place tonight. So my hope is that tonight we can go through a variety of different questions that feeds the staff, not only the questions they need to answer, but data that they need to gather, the concerns that you might have, so that we can work towards a process that helps us align our values and our vision around what a new relationships with our law enforcement partners might look like. Just to let you know, I've been in contact with the sheriff, the police chief, as well as city officials for the cities that we serve. And I've just had conversations with them and explained the process that we were going to go through following this meeting tonight, once we kind of get our marching orders. The other thing I should tell you, and it's probably true for you as well, is that I've been contacted by some staff and some parents, is there data that we could be gathering for you to inform this conversation a little bit? And really, that's what my hope is tonight. I've also asked Alex O to fit in, and I think everybody's familiar with Alex. He was formerly a student resource officer. He was a student resource supervisor, and now he works for the Hillsborough School District as the heading up the Department of Public Safety. And so he will be a great listener, and this is well, as well as a source of information as we work to do that re-envisioning of what our relationship might look like. Situation going to look like, what are the SIA funds, are they going to come in or not? And in talking with people across the state, there's still a huge lack of clarity on that. Most people are gearing up, most districts are gearing up to two different kind of levels. One of them is not receiving SIA funds at all, and then the other level is no SIA funds as well as a 5% reduction. And if we hit that mark, that would be about $11 million reduction in our budget. Behind the scenes, we have been working on an interim plan to cover that, to cover our equity needs, that would be a shared position. And I was prepared to start sharing some of those details tomorrow with Martin and Erica during the time that we talk. We are not prepared to share that publicly, you know, what kind of reductions we're facing. One of the things that we're sensitive to is wanting to, if we end up making reductions in a really significant way, like we believe most districts will have to do, we want to be sensitive to putting any new hire in a situation where they feel like, you know, they're pitted against, you know, did we hire this person and we had to let an additional teacher go? Or did we make this decision?
Sorry, Rose, I'm getting feedback on your...
I just want to let you know that I'm going to record right now.
Perfect. So if we can record our meeting and ensure that this is posted on our website, that would be helpful. Thank you. Does everybody feel comfortable with that? If the YouTube isn't working, that's our backup. Okay. Sounds good. Thank you. So with that, yes, this is basically just a discussion time, and I'm facilitating conversation with you all and trying to hear what your concerns are as a board.
Well, I guess if I could start, if I have a list of questions that I have formulated over the past 24 hours or so, if I may begin asking those.
And I would say with the caveat just that we might not have the answer, but these are all the things that Mike is jotting down to make sure that he goes and finds out for us or gathers this data back for us.
Definitely. So I guess my first question is, what's the original mission statement or intent of the SROs and the HSD? Like when we first devised the current situation, what was the overall mission statement?
Can I jump in and add to that? We had a policy, HSD had a policy that we deleted recently, about a year ago, I think. And you ask a very good question, what is our policy intent? And I think we need to take a hard look at that. So answering that question would be an outcome in this process. It's worthwhile looking at the old policy, which we just took down. I think the old policy, which we deleted as a board, this board deleted, kind of shows you the institutional momentum of where we got to where we are with SROs. And the number one stated intent was, quote, "providing a positive image of law enforcement and law enforcement officers for students." It goes on to list a total of six desired outcomes in the HSD policy, but clearly the number one was basically to have them be viewed favorably by the student body. So I don't pretend to be the answer to that question, but you ask a very good question.
And Martin, I can chime in on that one as well. The old policy that Martin is referencing, that was rewritten in 2008, and it was recommended for deletion in 2018 or 19, Martin? Which was...
Eighteen.
End of eighteen, so about a year and a half ago.
Okay, so it was recommended for deletion at that time, and it was recommended for deletion because at that time, by the time it was reviewed, we already had our own law enforcement staff on board. So when Alex came on board, the OSBA felt that that was a signal that we could delete that policy and we could include in our values or in our inter-agency agreement what some of our stated outcomes were. And just to give you an example, if you were, and I'd be happy to send this to board members, the inter-agency agreement that we have in place, the six items that Martin references, those are located in the agreement with Washington County Sheriff. So it is almost verbatim. So there is a little bit of history there that would indicate that what the stated mission was, and it looks like that is held over time.
Thank you, Mike. And just for everyone's reference, and Sheen actually, Jackie, I know you mentioned that you wanted to speak, so you'll be next. I just wanted to read Sheen's questions to guide our conversations that we received from Mike, which was, what concerns are community members sharing with you regarding SROs? What additional information do you need to engage in a future conversation regarding SROs? As we develop a plan for SROs in schools, what would you like to see considered? And as we talk with our city and county partners, what would you like to share or know? So I'm reading those because I know that there are some people that are hearing our board meeting and aren't able to read our chat. So I just wanted to make sure that we address those. And we'll have Jackie go, and then Danny, you can go after Jackie.
Okay. So Mike, will you be sending us a copy of the inter-agency agreement? I would like to see that.
Yes, I can send that. I can send copies.
Oh, okay. So I put a lot of thought and effort into this as I do everything. One caveat, I come from a law enforcement family. My father's a retired police officer. I think our relationship with HPD in Washington County are very positive. The questions I have are, and they're similar to the ones that I mentioned to Mike before, I just think it's important that we ask all those questions here in a public discussion. Is there a reason our SROs wear full uniform versus a soft uniform? I believe they used to wear polo shirts, and then the weapon was more concealed. I just think that that's, I'd like to understand why we went back to full uniform. I think it's very intimidating even for me. I also, one of my questions is, what is the SRO's role, which I think we will probably will be covered in the inter-agency agreement when we see. We asked that our staff and our committee members represent the demographics of our school population, so I just want to make sure that we're looking at our SROs through that lens as well. I'm just going to keep going unless somebody has a comment. I would, my question is, what training outside of regular law enforcement training do our SROs receive? Specifically, not only juvenile justice and specific to children and adolescents, but also do they receive training on our policies and procedures in reference to, what's the word I'm looking for? I can't think of the word.
Is it like de-escalation?
Yeah, discipline, school discipline.
Is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, school discipline. So, and the reason I ask that is because the most successful SRO programs, in my understanding, is that the SRO is there to enforce criminal laws, not school discipline policies and procedures. And I know that can be a very fine line. So I'm wondering if our SROs are even aware of what our discipline policies are. My other main point is that I know there are no federally approved standards or Oregon State guidance requiring additional training for SROs, even though there should be. I feel that as a school board, it's our responsibility to our school community to require this additional, some additional training, and maybe even additional job experience. Something like documented work history of positive work with children and youth, or a track record free of incidents of excessive force and discrimination. So I would like to know what the job description is and what the job requirements are for our SROs. I think that really covers it. I'm curious as to the referral and arrest information and the demographics of that from our schools. I know that schools with SROs are about five times as likely to have students arrested than schools without SROs, so I would just be curious as to what that looks like for our district.
Thank you.
That was a lot, sorry.
That's okay. I feel like everybody's kind of going to get their turn to express what kind of concerns, and Mike is just listening and documenting what, trying to capture what we want to make sure that he gets the right team and the right approach to find all this information for us.
So I think that's, one more thought that I had, and I'm sorry, is that SROs in elementary schools, while I understand it builds that relationship, can build that relationship for any future interactions as they go through our school district. I'm struggling with, you know, unless it's like an extreme case in which a student is at risk of harming themselves or others, I'm not sure the benefit and value of elementary school SROs, but that's just my, kind of my thought process. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. Next, we're going to have Danny speak, and then Andrew, since you already spoke, I'm going to go to Sheen, and then I'll come back to you. Okay? Just to give her a chance. Go ahead, Danny.
Okay, so I'm going to make a similar sort of, I can do the word, but like disclaimer that Jackie did, I also come from a sort of law enforcement family. Both my dad and uncle work for the sheriff, and I've worked on the sheriff's reelection campaign and have a personal relationship with the sheriff. So that's sort of where I'm coming from with all of this, but also thinking about the community and my experiences, and then the experiences of my friends and peers that I've talked to them about. My specific question was sort of similar to one that Jackie brought up, but is more specifically around the arrests in our district and sort of how many of those, what do they look like, at what schools, and what's the demographic breakdown of that. I'd also be interested in some of what Jackie was saying with like, what extra training do our SROs get? Do they get extra de-escalation training? If not, could we bring some of that in? I know we've been doing a lot more work around trauma-informed care in our schools, and I know that there is a generational, generational trauma that some students may come with relationships with police. I was wondering what sort of ideas we could bring in to help with that if we do keep going forward with our SROs. I personally have had many positive experiences with SROs. I know that that's not everybody's experience. My SRO at Miller was amazing. His name was Mox, and he was wonderful. I know a lot of my classmates also had very positive experience, very positive relationships with Mox. And so sort of going from that is my personal experience. I think that it'd be a good idea to look into what we can do to improve the program, but keep it. And then other than that, I think my only questions would be about just practices with who gets to be an SRO, who picks the SROs, and sort of what that looks like bringing them into our schools.
Thank you, Danny. We're going to go to Sheen, and then Andrew.
Thank you. I will similarly just kind of rattle off a list of questions and kind of thoughts that I've been having. I know that, so as Martin was mentioning, kind of the original intent of the policy that was created was to really create a positive image of law enforcement. I want to know, I guess, from our conversation today, are we wanting to create a new policy? And if so, you know, what, I guess, what will that look like? I think that in, I guess, in how we build out our continued partnership with law enforcement, I think that, you know, one, having more intentionality to have diverse representation of SROs to really reflect our student body is something that will be important for us to consider, especially as we move forward with conversations with Washington County Sheriff's Office and HPD. Couple other questions I have are around, you know, what are the types of incidences that SROs have responded to? And what generally is kind of the data around the numbers of incidences that we generally respond to in a given school year? And then have we had any issues with SROs using excessive force or, you know, any type of discriminatory acts towards BIPOC students in our school district? So those, I think, you know, around the data piece, I think that would be helpful to know. I know Mike had already answered a couple of the other questions that I had around just the number of SROs and kind of what the funding model looks like. And I know that with our partnership, we have, there are only a couple of positions that we actually fund ourselves. And so I think, I guess my last question would be, you know, what is that number? How much of our budget actually goes towards funding this program and this partnership? And those are all of the questions I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheen. So next, we'll go to Andrew, and then we'll go to Maria, and then Yedira.
Yeah, I just had a few other questions. So my first one being, are SROs required to undergo annual implicit bias training? And then are they required to undergo, I guess, sort of rattling off what everyone else has said, de-escalation training? Do we have any protocols in place to ensure that SROs get mental health treatment? Because I know sometimes if a police officer may have mental health issues that may interfere with their work, which could result in an accidental escalation or excessive use of force. And then do we have anything about SROs taking like any classes in psychology or just sort of making sure that they know about mental health to address, you know, if something should be sent or addressed to a mental health professional versus is this something that SROs need to intervene in? And then is it possible, or do we already have a community oversight program composed of BIPOC community members and BIPOC students that can maintain accountability for our SROs primarily in use of excessive force versus de-escalation and proactivity?
Thank you, Andrew. Next, we're going to have Maria with some questions, and then Yedira, you're up.
Okay, so I had more questions, but a lot of them have been asked already. And so this one's very similar to what Jackie, Andrew, and Danny have mentioned. And so my first question is, are SROs required, like you guys have been asking, to go through some type of equity training, like how Andrew said, also including implicit bias training? And if so, if they act out of, like, if they do go through that type of training, is there specific acts that they can commit that they have to go through a process of analyzation and consequences? And I say equity, obviously, like, we're pretty aware that in some of our schools, it's very diverse, and so a lot of the students are considered minorities. And I personally really focus on that question because I've seen some officers kind of get taken by their bias and their implicit bias. So I do really want to like highlight that part of equity trainings or implicit bias And my other question is, I know it's required to have all weapons, AKA guns, when they're in their full uniform, and even if after this and like after this meeting or after these couple meetings, they're still required to wear their full uniform, is there anything that we can do or vote on or speak upon that like changes the rules where they can maybe minimize the type of weapons they carry? Let's say, because I do know that sometimes they carry tasers and pepper spray and the baton, so I don't know if, like, they're required to use all weapons at all times. Yeah.
Thank you, Maria. Yedira?
So I'd be just really interested to find out, what are the incidences that they're responding to, and what are the demographics, which I think has been shared before? Because while everyone seems to have positive interactions, I have shared with some board members and Mike, two experiences that I've personally had with SROs. And both times, it's kind of like, well, that's kind of strange, that doesn't sound normal, that doesn't sound like that's what we do, but these things happen. And so who in our district is checking what the resource officers are doing? Because when I share these experiences, like I said, they're like, that's not normal, that's not what's supposed to happen, but yet it did happen. So how many of these incidents, if it's just me, and I've had two of them, how often is this happening, really? And so just having more information and really like knowing what's going on out there, because I'm sure that there are lots more incidences like this, especially in our minority communities. And then the other thing is that we can't have resource officers be mental health experts, counselors, equity experts. So we have to find out what is more needed in our school district. Is it a mental health person? Then that's what it is. We can't expect them to do all of it and think that some training is going to be able to cover every single base that we need. So that's the other thing. I don't know if someone else has something else.
Thank you, Yedira. Great. I'm going to go to Jackie, who had a response for Maria's comment, and then Danny. Danny, I will wait and have Martin go since you've already gone, and then come back to you.
So are you going to me or to Martin?
Yeah, Jackie, go ahead if you have a response.
I just, what she said about their requirement to carry weapons and be in full uniform, I would hope that that would be something that we would be able to, I agree with her completely, that we would be able to help direct that. So I absolutely support what she said on that.
Thank you, Jackie. Go ahead, Martin, and then we'll come back to Danny.
Well, I'd just like to commend everybody. This is a public meeting, and I think ultimately the voters are held accountable, but I'm just really encouraged by the refreshing candidness of this discussion. And, you know, what I'm going to say is pre-decisional. I'm going to think out loud and share it. If we had to have a vote on it in a couple of months, I might vote to keep all the SROs in, I might vote to remove them completely. I don't know where I'm at, but I want to sort of think out loud with my colleagues. And I really appreciate Erica and Mike, this opportunity for us to come together as a board and really, in the public's eye, have a discussion about this. For me, I place it in a broader context of, you know, our racist institutions and the impact it's had on persons of color. But for me, it's not just about the SROs, it's about our curriculum, it's about the composition of our staff, it's about our purchasing and procurement and contracts. It's really everything that we do as a public entity. Are we doing that mindful of how to be inclusive? And I think there's work to be done. There's always work to be done, and this board in particular is, I feel, certainly me, and I think all of us, are really passionate about moving forward in all those areas. So it's in that broader context of what do we need to be doing as we always respond to the needs of the community to be inclusive? The SRO thing is almost kind of like low-hanging fruit. This presented as a law enforcement issue in Minneapolis, and sort of that kind of spills over rather quickly to SROs, but it's a valid, it's a valid point of concern. I spent 24 years in the military, so I understand when a person's pack and heat, it changes the room. You are acutely aware when there's somebody wearing a weapon in your presence. And I'm not entirely convinced we want that dynamic on a permanent, full-time basis in our schools. I think we want that presence when we need that presence, and when we don't need that presence, I don't think we want that presence, because you can train, and you can soften, and you can do a lot of things, but the impact of a weapon in the building is palpable in my personal experience. Plus, I think we sort of conflate a lot of things, a lot of lines cross through the SRO. And as my colleagues have mentioned, you know, there's de-escalation and outreach and community engagement and all these things. But also, I think in the back of a lot of people's minds is response and security. And if we're really after response and security, I don't think the SRO is the path to that outcome, to improving our posture, for example, against an active shooter threat. It would be just coincidental if our SROs were to be effective against a tragedy like that. But again, that's my opinion. If our outcome is security and response, I think we should have a different approach. My thoughts on the SROs is the only reason we're having this discussion is because they're provided to us. If we had to pay for seven armed, highly-trained law enforcement professionals, I don't think we could afford it. The only reason we're having this discussion is because they're provided to us. Uh, the only reason we're having this discussion is, is the community provides these resources to us more or less at a vastly reduced cost. I think if we were paying full freight on this, we'd buy seven counselors rather than seven armed law enforcement personnel if, if we were paying for it. Um, but again, that's my opinion. Um, I do lament the fact that we don't have a, uh, director of equity or a chief diversity officer, um. These issues land uniquely in an educational setting. Uh, and it would be nice to have somebody internal to the educational setting who's really in my mind focused on the, the DEI dynamic, uh, the anti-racist organization that we need to be and all the ways that we need to navigate a million different issues through the lens of education. Um, and so I, I am gonna champion that. I understand the realities of the budget, but I, I would hate to think that the budget stopped us from doing something we absolutely needed to do, so um, I'm certainly open to, to whatever Mike is gonna propose tomorrow and, and as a board, as we look at that issue, I'm I'm really, really hungry for some good advice on navigating these issues. Um, lastly, we wanna close the achievement gap, uh, and I think to go from eighty-six point two four percent to close to a hundred percent, we have to do something different. And, and maybe, maybe a law enforcement presence is actually oddly enough helping, uh, preventing us from closing that gap. Maybe there's a five or ten percent of the student population in high school who are actually traumatized by the presence of, of an armed law enforcement, uh, personnel in the building and maybe oddly enough, even though we, we think it's there to help, maybe it's actually hurting us get from eighty-six percent to close to a hundred percent. I don't know, again, speculation on my part, but thank you colleagues for letting me think out loud as we, as we look at this as, in as three sixty a way as we possibly can. Back to you, Erica.
Thank you, Martin. So, um, I know Danny had a question that I told you you can go, Danny, after this, and then we'll have Mark and then Lisa.
Okay, perfect. So what Yadira said really resonated with me in the fact of like, we always say whenever we hear a negative experience with an SRO, it's like, oh, that's completely out of what we'd expect, but my big question is like, who are we asking about their experience with SRO? Because just based upon everything, I will have a different experience than a student of color will. And that's just the basis of how life has been, just how our society is at this point. And so thinking of that is that I'll have an intrinsically different view of a police officer growing up in a law enforcement family than somebody else and knowing my experiences, my thoughts on police and all that things of my, my raise, how, how I've been raised versus how someone else has grown up and their lived experience and my question is, what are we doing to make, make the schools a safe place for any student to come with any concern like that? Because I can find a lot of times is that if, if the majority of the staff, the majority of everybody is seeing like, SROs is a, um, immediately positive force and whereas we're all very, I'm, I feel like I'm not saying this is all right, my brain is so jumbled right now, but I'm, what I mean to say is, what are we doing to make it a safe place for anybody to come with a concern that they have? As opposed to immediately believing of our law enforcement? And exactly what Martin was saying with the idea of we're all thinking about trauma-informed care and we're thinking about how to close that achievement gap and keep our students there. I know that, um, me, Maria, and Andrew have all grown up in a post nine eleven, post, uh, Columbine. A lot of us has grown up with that idea of like, school is scary and there's that idea of like, anything could happen. And so bringing a police officer in is a, you immediately think that it's a good idea, you have that extra protection, you've got someone to protect you. But the truth is, is that there have been no cases where an SRO has stopped or prevented a, a, um, situation like that. Which isn't the SRO's fault necessarily, but when we're thinking about what we're doing to protect our students, could the presence of an armed police officer be causing more problems to the, to the students than it could be helping? Or could it be making some students feel safer and like, what are we doing to get those, that feedback from all of our students, not just the most vocal of them?
Thank you, Danny. Um, we'll go to Mark and then Lisa.
Thanks, uh, yeah, the, a lot of, you know, what I would have started the conversation with would be reinforcing a lot of the things you already heard from many of my colleagues, so, um, you know, eh, when I don't bring those up, don't think that I'm not thinking about those issues as well, just trying to figure out what new to add to the conversation, so. The, I, I think it's good that we're having a conversation and I think what, what we're hoping to get from some of this is guidance for Mike and staff on what to do next. I think we realize that what we, what, what we're trying to figure out is, what do we do next? It, it seems to me, the main consideration that we're going to make in the coming weeks, months, is do we continue the SRO program or not? And if we continue it, what shape does it take? Um, so for me, in addition to all the things that you've already heard my colleagues say, I would, you know, I, I would like to hear from our partners in this, the Hillsborough Police Department and the Washington County Sheriff. So a- as partners in this endeavor, is it something they would like to continue? If so, what are the positive aspects that they're seeing from it? So I understand we have our perspective and we should be mostly focused on our perspective. But as partners in this endeavor, I would like to hear what our, um, partners have to say about the program. Would they like to see it continue? Are they deriving benefit from it? It, and I, and so that's sort of, and, and data on, like, I think Jackie may have already mentioned this, so I don't wanna reinforce too many points, but you know, we don't really want to be using SROs for school discipline. So day, can we gather data? Do we have data? Is there transparency into the data? If we don't have it, uh, from our partners on the kinds of interactions the SROs have with our student body and our parents. So if, if an SRO becomes involved in a situation at one of our buildings, what, what is the shape of that? Who initiates it? Is it the school who initiates it or the SRO who initiates it? We know that we have, uh, a discipline disparity between students of color and white students. So does that continue in the SRO program or maybe it's differentiated? I would like to see if we can, the data on that, and if we can't, I would love to know why our partners aren't tracking that kind of information. So, so to me, you know, it's sort of, eh, trying to keep the end goal in mind is, you know, I would like to find some more information. I think we're in the information gathering stage, but ultimately, I think we will need to come to a decision on, do we continue this SRO program? And if so, what shape does it take? Again, reinforce a lot of things my other colleagues have said, and just trying to figure out what to add. I'm sure I'll say stuff later, but there you go.
Thank you, Mark. Um, we have Lisa, um, and next, and then Jackie had a question on Mark's comment, so. Um, if you want, Jackie, why don't you ask him? He just went and then we'll have Lisa go.
Okay, there I am. Um, so Mark's comment about tracking what our SROs are involved in during the day. If I'm correct, every police officer has to fill out a report after every shift, so I would hope that our partners somehow are tracking that or can get that data. That's just, um, from my experience, so I just thought I'd throw that out there.
Thank you, Jackie. Um, so then we'll go to, uh, Lisa.
Okay, uh, so I, I'll just kind of copy what Mark said in the beginning, um, agree with almost everything that has been said and, and would echo and support it, so if I don't mention it, please don't think it's because I don't also think it's important. Um, but one thing I do really wanna echo is the idea of a soft uniform and so I hope, I know that Mike is keeping track of all the things that we're asking and if you could just, Mike could put like a checkmark next to that question, I think it's um, a really critical to be asking our partners. And, and then I, um, the, the main question that I have, um, is, is it possible for us to kind of have a, a profile or a spotlight on like a day in the life of an SRO and kind of figure out what are some of the things, um, that they spend their day doing? Because I think even from hearing some comments from board members that maybe we don't fully grasp what that job is and what it looks like, and I think that we really need to, to have a fully informed conversation, so I would really like to have that information. Uh, and then just a couple comments, um, sort of devil's advocacy, but just to, um, a perspective that we haven't shared yet. I have, of course, in my skin, had a lot of positive interactions with SROs. And that's not true for, and that's not true for non-SRO police officers, but for SROs specifically, it's always been very positive. Um, and in our district specifically, I think that we, what we have is not necessarily broken, that doesn't mean that it cannot be improved, right? And so I think asking ourselves, how can we make it better and fix some of the things that are not perfect, right, is definitely the right question. But I, I'm not, um, a baby with bath water kind of person on this issue. Um, and at least not yet. Once we have more information, perhaps that will change, uh, absolutely. Um, but I remember a few years ago, I think that, um, most of you all were here at that time with the exception of the students, but I could be wrong about how long ago it was. Um, at one of the high schools, we had a student, um, collapse and the SRO was actually there, right place, right time, and that student, um, who would have died if that officer were not there, lived and it was this big deal. Um, you know, the life was saved. I think it's important to remember some of those really positive wins that we, we do have. Um, and, and keep that in mind. I also just wanna remind everyone that the funding for the SROs, I know it's been kind of mentioned a little bit, is not our, um, yeah, it was Liberty. Um, not our, not from our general fund budget, right? We, we pay for aid officers and so bearing that in mind, it's not like we can repurpose, uh, you know, millions of dollars, which is sort of what the call is when you do hear someone talk about it in the community, so uh, let's just be careful about our understanding of the funding. And then, uh, so, uh, uh, just a couple other things. When, when this meeting was scheduled, I kind of asked my kids about what, um, are there ever police officers at your school and what do they do and where do they go? And, and all of that and, um, basically, uh, uh, at least at the, our elementary school, um, the SRO, uh, is there to ask what they're having for lunch and hang out with them at lunchtime. So that's, that's how they interpret, uh, the, the job. And I do know, um, I think it was in kindergarten, um, the, the officer came in and did a lesson about what to do if you see a gun somewhere, um, which is, uh, don't touch it, turn around, walk away, tell a grown up or whatever, you know, there's like the three steps and it's sort of hammered into them. Um, and then two more things. I remember, um, when I was chair, so probably Erica has this experience now for those two years. I ca- I tried to think back and I cannot even tell you how many times I got a call from Mike um, about an issue that was happening at a school, either a threat that had been made or, um, or some sort of a serious crime, um, usually at the high school, related to drugs or an assault or something. And that we were handling that by dealing in close partnership with HPD, right? And the school resource officer who does have special training, separate from a traditional police officer and who's familiar to the kids, was there and kind of handling that situation. And so, um, I just, I want us to be cognizant of that when we're talking about the possibility of sort of disbanding the entire program, because if we do that, then the officers that we have in those situations do not have that special training. Um, nor are they, um, experienced at, at the school or the layout, they're not a familiar face to the students. And perhaps we will decide that that is, um, you know, a, a, a cost we're willing to pay for the benefit of not having them and that may be the case. But I just don't want us to forget that, um, that's there. And then the very last thing, this, uh, is in a different district, but is very nearby. Um, you all know that I was, uh, doing a, a long-term subposition, um, which today was the last day, all done. Um, and, uh, my, my seventh grade students were writing essays, narrative essays about meaningful personal experiences that they had. One of my students wrote a beautiful essay and it was about, um, abuse that, um, they had experienced when they were a child and they were in elementary school. And they shared, um, this experience with their teacher. And so their teacher, of course, had to report it. Uh, the police officer, who the child knew because the SRO had been in the building and was a familiar face, came, uh, and really kind of he- held the hand of this child through this really traumatic experience. Um, and and that was a key piece of this story, um, for this person. And I think, you know, we it's important to, to have familiar faces, right? The reason why teachers receive that kind of report often is because they're safe. Uh, the timing of that was really interesting to me because then this meeting popped up and as I'm reading this essay, I was just like, oh my gosh. Um, and so I just wanted to share that with you. Um, obviously that's not always the case and like I said, maybe we'll decide that the costs of whatever negative, negative experiences our, our students are experiencing um, is, is okay and we, we wanna move forward from this and uh, I'm not completely against that idea, um, but I, I am very hesitant to go there and I wanted to share why. That's all.
Thank you, Lisa. Um, we have a two comment, oh, just one, Mark, on the soft uniform?
Yeah, I would, uh, it seems like people are gravitating towards the idea of not having the full uniform and that we used to, so I, I am sort of in agreement with that, but I also realize I am not an expert, subject matter expert on this front. So, uh, on that, uh, on the issue of the uniform, I would like to know why we transitioned from what I guess is being called a soft uniform to the hard uniform. Is there a reason for that? Do the experts think that it was beneficial in some way? Uh, do we feel like it's being detrimental? And it, it's sort of, it, it keeps coming back to, you know, I, I feel like an SRO program, when done well, is helpful and beneficial. I'm also a white guy, so of course I think that. So, you know, I would like to find out the data, that's or not, an SRO program done well is helpful and beneficial. So, eh, to Lisa's analogy, baby bath water, I, I, I'm not prepared to throw the entire program out unless, you know, we have evidence that says this really isn't helping. And, and, and when you're in, uh, there's been a, a few times where we've had gatherings in the, in the boardroom with SROs there, five or six of the SROs there and the, the the stories are uplifting. The, the stories, you know, are tremendous stories of connections. I think Mox has come up a bunch of times. You know, the, the stories of the connections they make are uplifting and make you feel good about the program, so. But if that's the anomaly, you know, I would love to find out that we're just highlighting those, you know, unique instances of helpful and beneficial and whether or not the program is actually helpful or beneficial.
Thanks, Mark. Um, we have a comment from Martin and then a comment from Danny.
Thank you, Erica. Just wanted to, uh, continue to add to the discussion. It's my sense that broadly, the community's expectations of public safety, whatever that really means, are changing. You know, the, uh, I think everybody here knows I was a champion of the Washington County Public Safety levy, so I'm, I'm a fan of public safety. But what exactly is public safety? And, uh, and it's my sense that it's changing, it's my sense that it's much more about, um, mental health and, uh, addictions, care and treatment. And, and less so about just old school lock them up, uh, jail beds. Um, that's just one person's opinion. And so that, that shifting expectations on the part of the community, I think lands in us in the K-12 SRO way somehow, and what that ultimately looks like, I don't know. I, and I wanted to also echo what, what Erica said at the beginning of the meeting, I despite the fact that I've shared a lot of, you know, opinions, I am very much undecided and in a listening mode and the voices that I really wanna hear, um, I, I, Mark said, we wanna hear from our partners, of course we do. But I also wanna hear from the people that we don't hear about very often, uh, the communities who maybe feel intimidated by law enforcement and uh, we might be surprised at what they say, they might actually love them. Uh, I, I got a little dose of that from some of the, uh, migrant community when I, when I, um, went to some of those meetings where they actually were reassured by a uniformed law enforcement presence in the buildings and that kind of really surprised me, but I think it depends on, um, you know, your experience and your comfort level with, with institutions big time. And so I'm, I'm very much in a listening mode and, and I really wanna go past our law enforcement partners and into the community on this. And Mike, how you actually organize that? I don't know, um, but that's what I'm really looking for. The part of the process is some sort of a listening, uh, engagement where, where all voices are heard.
Thanks, Martin. Um, then Danny, you had a comment?
Yeah, just really quick, I was thinking about what Lisa was talking about with the essay and then I think it was Mark was talking about how when we have our school board meetings and sometimes people will talk about the SROs and how it's sort of like uplifting to know that the familiar face can really help. When I think about SROs, I think about two SROs, the The first one I think about is Mox, because he was the SRO at my, at Miller. And he had a really great relationship with a lot of the Miller students. And I know a lot of them were very, very, had very positive relationships with Mox, even considering some of them had not so positive relationships with other police outside of the school. I know that was there. And then I also think about Officer Rios, who I think is Glencoe's uh, SRO?
Um, she isn't at Glencoe anymore, as far as I am concerned. I think we had a new SRO come in at the semester, but someone could fact check me on that.
Well, so I'm not really sure where she's stationed, or she's still an SRO in our thing. But I know that she was at the um, the board meeting we had in October about the sex ed curriculum. And I know that that one was one that I was very like, personally, I was very nervous about going to, just as sort of a visibly LGBT person going into that space. And it was sort of, you know, a contentious space. And I know that Officer Rios was with me most of the night. And having her there made me feel a lot safer. And so thinking of that, I don't know why I'm crying. That's an important question. But I know that, like, I was very uncomfortable that night, and a lot of things made me feel sort of nervous, but I never felt scared because I knew she was there. And so keeping that in mind, knowing, knowing all the different um, experiences, I think it's also important to remember the fact that our SROs can be a good force for good when we make sure that they're trained properly enough to be a good force for good. And sort of, you know, keeping in mind, getting everybody's perspective on the SROs is important. And so not letting all the good good of feelings about SROs outweigh some of the bad ones, but also, you know, trying to figure out if there's a way that we could solve any of the problems.
Thank you, Danny, and a comment from Rose saying, thank you for sharing your emotions. That's totally natural. Um, we have a comment on from Mark on voices, and then Maria, we have a comment from you.
Yeah, just following up on what Martin was saying, and I think Danny sort of alluded to it a little bit there as well, that um, I I'm I'm hoping to hear from as many voices as we can going forward. And and uh, I I guess one of the things I would I would challenge Mike and staff to do is figure out ways to hear those marginalized voices in a safe environment. If if we're thinking we're doing this all in one meeting, and we have uniformed police officers in the room giving us information, I don't think marginalized communities who might have disparaging comments to say about those people would be comfortable being in that room. And I want to be able to hear those voices, and I want those people to be sa- feel safe when they're having that discussion with us. So I I don't have the answer. But I want to make sure that we figure out a way to facilitate the the voices of people who um, you know, are traditionally marginalized in this process.
Thank you, Mark. Uh, Maria?
Um, I just want to emphasize what um, Yadira said, that there should, there is, it is very important to have like different staff for different situations, because hearing a lot of good stories about the SROs is important when we're deciding whether or not to keep them. And so it is like in our times, obviously, violent acts or terrorist acts are very common, right? And although in our community, in this environment, it's been shown that it hasn't happened, or it might most likely not happen. It can happen anywhere, right? And so it's always weird. But like your dear said, um, just like how she went through uh, two incidents, two negative incidents with SROs, I personally didn't, but I personally witnessed some. And it's heartbreaking, because if we want our students to succeed, they have to be safe in in and out of school. And what mainly hurt, or what I felt really offended, was that they were my people. They were brown people, right? And so I've always been privileged enough to have lighter skin and to always be an a tryhard in school. And so I already have like an image that student staff have of me. And so this officer knew me. And so I've never, or officers have known me, and so they've never looked at me bad. Or I've never been seen bad, in a bad way. But I do have friends that are considered um, that, let's say, like, they're the stereotypical bad kids, right? And so um, when they would go talk about the issues, because their lives aren't the easiest, and they have to go to admin, sometimes admin brings in officers, maybe because they think that it's
Yeah, it works.
That it's an issue um, that has to do with the SRO, right? And so I do recall where the SRO kind of stereotype
Hold on, Maria. I just want to make sure that Francesca can mute her mic, so we don't hear any backfeed. Go ahead, Maria.
Okay, um, what do I say? Um, I do recall a situation where I was, I have a friend who went to talk about an issue that had to do with another um, group of students. And so my friend was a person of color, and the other group of students were also people of color. And so I remember when they went into the office or to talk to to the appointment they scheduled. They never agreed to bring in an SRO. They thought it was more like of an admin um, discipline situation. And so um, when they arrived, the officer was there. And so um, I was, I mentioned this at yesterday's meeting, because I had a question about it. And so maybe it's also like some training that we have to do with admin that they thought to bring in a student officer, an an SRO, was proper when it had to do with the student of color, thinking of like stereotyping their background, if that makes sense. And so um, what kind of hurt was that I knew both both people, both sides, the person who was gonna go to the appointment and the person and the people they had problems with. And so I know the people that they had problems with, and they're seen as those that like, oh, they're like, they get in trouble by the law, right? And so it, there is proof that, yeah, they've gotten in trouble. But there is, like, in general, there's been people of color who get in trouble for misdemeanors that you really shouldn't be getting in trouble for. And so um, that is what really kind of, kind of what has stayed in my head and what I have an image of the SROs. Although I am obviously trying to stay aware that there are good, good stories about them. I've had good experiences with them. But obviously, when I have those in the back of my head, like, it's, it's more traumatizing, because I can easily expect that to me, because I'm also a person of color, even though I do always, I'm 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 always aware of the privilege that I have and that I've created for myself. And so because of that, sometimes, and like I said, I've never experienced that, and I'm sometimes thinking about it during the day. I just imagine what those students who have traumatizing experiences with them have to go during the day. And because I'm I'm emphasizing the idea that, yes, different staff or different situations is very important. Maybe, I mean, yeah, because that's important. We should really focus on how they're chosen and how the process is. Because, like I said in the beginning, um, if we want our students to succeed, they obviously have to focus on the education and their extracurriculars and how they're gonna go on to the future, instead of thinking, is this SRO gonna attack me? Or because of the past mistakes I've made, am I gonna have like a bad image to them? Am I not gonna get the proper help or anything? And um, I just think that that's very important. And those type of people, those students that have those type of questions are the ones who are most likely not going to speak up because of how they're seen and how they've always tried to speak up, but they're ignored because they say, but you you put that on yourself, when most of the times it's not a choice that they have. And yeah, that's about it.
Thank you, Maria. Jackie, you had a comment? You're muted, Jackie.
There we go. Sorry, I totally agree with Maria about um, SROs should not be called in, or um, they shouldn't be used to enforce discipline issues and and discipline policies and procedures. It and and that makes me angry. It really does. I think that we just need to to really um, find out from our community what they feel they need to, to be successful in school and to feel safe in school. And um, adjust our program to um, to fit those needs better, if if that's what it is. I just don't think that that our students, not just that I think, the fact is, they should not be referred to um, law enforcement unless there are no other alternatives available. And I would, that's probably not maybe what we're doing, I'm not sure. So I'm looking forward to finding that out. But Maria, that was spot on.
Thank you, Jackie. So we have a comment from Mark and then a comment from Yadira.
Yeah, just I want, I don't, I wanna ensure that like one of the comments Lisa made, I I just sort of reinforced that a little bit, you know, it, the the anecdotal stories we hear are that, you know, the students who have interactions or seeing like the, you know, frankly, the white kids who have good interactions with the police, they're prepared for interactions with the law enforcement later in life. I think whether it's being pulled over for a speeding ticket or whatever, all of us are going to have some interaction with law enforcement over the course of our lifetime. And if there is evidence that says that, you know, having a friendly interaction with a police officer at an early age makes that more beneficial, then great. Love to see the data on that. Love to figure out, um, i- if that's not the case, you know, then as we consider whether or not to continue having this presence in our building, that would be a factor. And and Lisa made, the, sorry, the point Lisa was making earlier that I wanted to reinforce was, it may be a trade off we're willing to take. Right now, when there is an incident in our building, and it's going to happen, there's going to be violence, drugs, something. There's going to be an incident in one of our buildings that's going to require the attention of law enforcement. And right now, we have somebody who's familiar with the building, familiar with the student by that comes in. If we eliminate the SRO program, we're not going to have that. That may be a worthwhile trade, but let's make that trade knowingly and with our eyes open, as opposed to just having that happen as a consequence of our action.
Thank you, Mark. So we have a comment by Yadira and then Martin.
Um, so you know, when it comes time to, you know, decide which direction we're going, um, I think there has to be something also in there that discusses oversight and accountability of our um, SROs. Right now, it doesn't seem we have that. There, they could pretty much talk to any of our students, interact with any of our families, and under whatever circumstances, you know, caused that, we don't know about. So I'm pretty sure if an SRO interacted with one of our families, and then somebody from this school district had to follow up on that, we'd have a better idea of that. But but as of now, we don't know. And that's also, I think, the problem going on in like, you know, with our, you know, uh, city and all of that, is that there's no accountability and there's no oversight. So if we do go that direction, we need to have checks and balances so that we we do know what what kinds of interactions. And also, talking to our families after an interaction to see how they feel about it. If we really want to know, I mean, then that's that's the way that we can find out is following up with them and saying, hey, we know you had this interaction. Is there something that you would feel comfortable telling us that you didn't want to with the SRO? Because I know from my personal experience and, you know, being a person of color, you know, my whole view of law enforcement is a little different.
Thank you, Yadira. Um, Martin with a comment and then Mark.
Thank you, Erica. I'd I'd like to add to what Yadira said, um, in addition to accountability and transparency, but also board level policy. In in my mind's eye, in my preparation for this meeting, I I wanted to read our our board policy. And uh, because I remember the old one. And and I was rather surprised to realize that it had fallen off the radar as a board level policy statement in our in our OSBA sponsored review of our policies. And in hindsight, I I I think this needs to be brought back to a board level policy statement on on SROs. That would be one one outcome. Um, and then the other one, I just wanted to share with my colleagues some insight. My understanding of the security business is there's a range of security that you can buy. And it, sometimes it's what you can afford, but oftentimes it's what you need. So like Walmart has a theft problem. So they put, they put a grandma at the door as a greeter. And that's actually a a component of their security strategy. And it's not law enforcement at all, but it's very much a piece of their puzzle that is a security thing. Uh, it's an anti-theft measure. So in my experience at Washington County, we have about the lowest level of uniformed uh, presence, and they're unarmed. They can't even escort you out of the building. They have no, they have no standing, but they they provide presence. And that uniformed presence is kind of the entry level of security. And then you you go up there. So when you realize there's a spectrum of security, you realize coming in with a with a armed, uniformed um, law enforcement officer, bam, we're we're right at the top of the scale. And and the reality is, if you're after security, there's things that started a grandma at the front door and build from there, uh, if your goal is security. So I just wanted to share that with you um, as some additional per- oh, and one other thing about the SROs, it could be that we still have SROs, but they're more of a a mobile presence, that they they know our buildings, they know our staff. They don't necessarily have the relationship with the students, but they're more dispatched uh, rather than, you know, so that if it's a response capability we're after, we could preserve that, uh, but not necessarily the full-time presence and engagement with the students. Again, this is just levels of security and different looks at the same issue um, that might accomplish different outcomes, uh, depending on what our priorities are.
Thank you, Martin. Um, so there's a comment from Mark around the oversight comment, and then Danny, you have another question.
I I think Yadira is spot on with her comments on accountability and oversight, and I just want to reinforce that. And I I I would expect that our law enforcement partners have a good story to tell about oversight and accountability with all that's been going on um, nationwide over the last month. And uh, I I understand that these are not our employees, that they're in our buildings, but they're not our employees. And I would suggest that if there's a resistance to the concept of oversight and accountability on the part of the district, then that would be a very telling piece of information to have as we make our decision.
Thank you, Mark. Uh, Danny, you had a question?
Yeah, my question had to do with, so if our SROs are called in with a problem, say there's a admin problem, they know that they have, they suspect that there is some sort of crime or something going on, they call the SRO in to talk to a student. Do we require uh, the parents to be present or be aware of the situation? Because I know if it was any other police officer talking to a minor, they would have to have a parent present. If our SROs are doing the same thing, would would we require a parent present? Now, I ask this sort of in a double edged sword, because I know of situations where we haven't had parents present or parents knowing about a student being pulled for a um, an issue uh, around different things. And I think that that could definitely be a problem. I know in the situation that I'm very aware about, it didn't end up being a problem at all. But I also know that that student was white and privileged. And we're sitting here about how there's, there can be biases and different problems that can arise within admin or SROs based upon race, socioeconomic status, all sorts of things like that. If we're looking at it, it's situations could get messy. And I'm wondering what we have in place to make sure that if a student is pulled by an SRO, there's, we're still keeping at least the same, if not more accountability that we would have with any other officer.
Thank you, Danny. Um, Sheann also had a comment. She says she agrees with Martin regarding the need for a policy. Thank you, Danny. Um, Sheehan also had a comment. She says she agrees with Martin regarding the need for a policy. Jackie also had an additional comment on here that she agrees with Martin and will ensure the agreement cannot change in the future as well. And it will ensure that the agreement that cannot change in the future. So I, Martin just commented that I have been gracious in brokering this discussion and I can share my thoughts. I think I um, I think it's really it's just seeing the um dynamic of our conversations and even, you know, how long we've been talking about this. And we can look back and look at the minutes and how much time people of color take up space in this conversation versus not. And that's just telling because um that's just how comfortable you are with your experiences in talking about this, and it isn't the same for people of color. This is a really hard subject. It's really difficult. And I think about um you know, tasking Mike to have these conversations or brokering these conversations with our, really our most vulnerable populations that have been impacted by this and how painful it is. How raw and um vulnerable it is to say these truths. It's hard. I think that for us and for our partners, if they really want to be our partners, they have to be our partners and see that what our needs are and actively work to meet our needs too. And um we need uh mediators. We need mental health workers. Some of our kids are dying. And uh if they have money to spend, spend it on that. Like, help us with that. I think that um I think that accountability part is really difficult. Because we agency, but I think it where it's easy, it's on us. That um we are an institution just like them. And we are at fault just like them for not making the changes that we needed to make. And if we want to hold our partners to a standard and to um a level of accountability, we need to be prepared to answer as well as a district, as an educational system. And um we can't expect them to meet us where we haven't arrived yet. So I know it's easy to kind of get on this um, you know, momentum that's happening right now with our um, with the SRO conversation. But the reality is, is that we have so much work to do. And it starts with us. It starts individually. It starts with our own district, our own administration. We, like Mark mentioned, you know, we have our own disparities that we need to acknowledge. And um, and I think the issue that we have or where it's really more pressing is that sometimes when you already have that disparity that you're that you're seeing and you're adding another agency that or agencies that haven't fixed that issue, you're compounding that problem. And then you're you're just making it even worse. So we need to make sure that we are looking at ourselves first as well. And that that the level of accountability that we expect from our partners, we are um putting that on ourselves so that we can lead by example. So those are just some of my cons, the comments on this. Um, I do have something that I uh wanted to share um with you all, but I just wanted to to make sure that that we're conscious of that space that is being taken up and who are the voices that we're hearing and who are the voices that we're not. Because not just here, but I think as a whole, as you see, most of the comments are around, you know, the positive experiences, because those are easy to say. And um, and they're also in very white spaces and very privileged spaces as well to talk about that. The ones that you don't hear are the ones that are very painful, because those are hard to talk about. So I just want to make sure that we acknowledge that. If anybody else wants to add in, go ahead. So you can give me a little break.
Hope we're thinking about how we facilitate those conversations, those difficult conversations. And that, hopefully, Mike, staff, you're listening and we can figure out a way to facilitate those.
Thanks, Mark.
Erica, if I could chime in for a second here, I I too have appreciated this conversation and hearing the a variety of comments. And um, first of all, I want to just appreciate and empathize with with everyone who's made the comments. I know it's um, it takes courage to do that and um to speak your truth like that is hugely important as we move forward with this conversation. So first of all, thank you for doing that. I I don't take that for granted. So much appreciated. You know, one of the things that I wanted to let you know is that in my conversation with our partners, they are very willing to have this conversation. And they are willing to um enter into discussion so that we can move forward in the most positive light. And um, so I want you to know that they're not, they're not wishing to back away from this conversation. They're not, they're not in a defensive posture whatsoever. They're in a conversational posture and and ready to come to the table and talk about this. Um, we've had just with with a cabinet over the last couple of days, we've had conversations about what our next steps would be. And, you know, for us, it would be, we are, we will put together a process so that we can um gather information from from a variety of different stakeholders. We, of course, want to talk to students and staff. Um, they they work closely with student resource officers every day. I think um as we come back and report and we'll be ready to, at our next meeting, we'll be ready for an update for you. We won't have gathered all of this information or or have been able to step through this entire process by the time we get together in a in a couple of weeks, but um, but I, but we can provide an update and we'll have a plan to continue to move us forward in the conversation to gather information. But we'll, but we will have an update for you. Um, like I said, we we want to get this right. We don't, we want to own our portion of the issue because it's, you know, one of the things that I think is interesting and I think is going to bear out as we as we move forward in this conversation is that, you know, we've been doing that work around, um, how do we, how do we make the discipline data? So it doesn't have the degree of disparity that it currently does between our white students and our students of color. And um, and oftentimes when student resource officers are brought in, and I I would say this is a majority of the time. And um, next, when we're together next time, you'll have an a chance to hear from Alex and and we'll provide another update. But most of the time when student resource officers are brought in, they're brought in um at the request of a of an administrative team member at the school. Um, it's, I I wouldn't want you to think that they're patrolling the halls, looking for violations or looking to enforce discipline. It is typically at the invitation of a um of an administrator that they are invited in. So I think what this conversation will also bear out is that we have additional work to do um as an administrative team. Um, and um, and I I I think that'll make for an interesting conversation. So I I guess just to reiterate, going forward, we will, um, based on what we've heard this evening, uh, we'll put together a plan to uh, first of all, get those questions answered for you. We'll have, we'll have answers to a lot of your questions by the next time we get together. And we'll also have a plan to gather information and put a timeline together so we can get a decision made here in the uh in the coming weeks. So um, I, we have diligently captured all of your, all of your questions and all of your qu- requests for information. And we'll, we'll get working on giving you answers and information.
Thank you, Mike. Um, we have a comment from Jackie.
I'm actually still trying to formulate it, so come back to me, can you?
Sure thing. We'll come back. I think the other thing for us, um you know, just to kind of reflect on and and think about is that I think as elected leaders, we've kind of, we've inherited an institution that we did not create. So it is our responsibility to grow business around the lived experiences of our diverse community. And um, I think that we need to contextualize those lived experiences against also the historic oppression of Black Indigenous and people of color that has been going on for a long time. So we need to make sure that we're listening to understand, not to create more trauma or more harm. And understanding that racism is an adverse childhood experience. So when we talk about um trauma and how our kids are living that, a lot of our students of color are still enduring that. So I know that we've, you know, as HSD, we've been engaged in this D I, DEI work for, you know, the past few years. And um it's, it's not a quick fix. It's gonna take a lot longer uh because it took a long time to put in place as well. But I know that we have to be intentional and explicit, deliberate about who we're engaging and including and doing outreach to when we say that that's what we want to do. Um, and I think that we also need to make sure that growing that awareness that if we don't see or hear those voices at the table, we can't make decisions just from the position that we sit in. We need to make sure that we're engaging uh that voice in our community that is not here. Any other thoughts or final comments before? You close? Okay, so I know that Mike is gonna take all this information and work to get us some answers and also a plan of how we um move forward um as a district. I think our goal is always to create a welcoming space where students can feel safe and ready to learn. And to my board members, I feel like if we can talk about a comprehensive sexual health for our community, with our community, we can talk about racism. In fact, we need to talk about racism. So um, this is our our job to do here in this position that we hold. And I know that as we continue to have those conversations with um our law enforcement partners and how they can show up in our spaces, I think that they're also looking at how they can take this opportunity to do restorative work and transformative work. So I'm hopeful that they're able to meet us um in this space. Thank you all for joining us and um we will get a follow up from Mike next week.
All right. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.